Five.
I'll second that.
Favor.
Aye. Okay.
Update on host community agreement for Daniel Till, farm in Plainfield, L C at twenty seven Brew Street.
Okay, so I've shared with Daniel and you two the the thing copy that the lawyer prepared for us. There are a couple of things that I didn't understand in the beginning that we could even negotiate. And she had a different recommendation than what was in your application. And tha- and that's the tier, in other words, the the upper limit of acreage that can be farmed. And then the other thing that we still need to talk about is the, let me see, it's on page eleven, section nine, it's about termination of this agreement. Yeah, the effect of date term and termination on page eleven of sixteen, section nine. But before we get to that, the other corrections that she made, because one of our questions to her had been, since he's not applying for a medical license or any of that stuff, is there a way we can strip all that out? I didn't think there was, but there was, and she did. So she took all references to, that's why some of the whereas has changed and 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 now comport to what you actually were applying for in your application. Um, on the tier question, she said, I'd recommend that you start, since it's not an up and running business and you don't have history with it, or how it's going to affect surrounding people, butters or neighborhood or whatever. I would recommend that you start at a lower tier because they are inundated right now with municipalities wanting to change their host community agreements because the odor is so offensive to the residents that they want, um, they want to cut it back. They don't want them to grow as much because the size of the grow affects the plungency of the odor. As apparently. And she was recommending start at tier six with the understanding that after two or three years, when we've got experience with your grow at tier six, which is fifty thousand square feet max, then we can always, it's easier to amend the host community agreement up in tier than it is down in tier. And so that, I have not discussed it with Ben and Care, but I.
Can you speak on it?
Okay.
And.
I think I'll let Ben and Care speak first and then, yes, this is a conversation between you and us, but I don't know what they think, so.
Okay.
I think the pay station does what he wants, but.
So just to explain that tier two is two acres of canopy.
Yeah.
A tier six would be one acre. I think the amount of smell produced from one acre to two acres wouldn't be measurable. Um, I think across the street, they are a tier eleven as well, so.
Right.
The amount of smell being.
Well, you didn't say that tier two is one acre?
Sorry, tier six, as you said, would be fifty thousand square feet, so a little bit over one acre.
It's forty thousand, forty thousand to forty thousand to fifty thousand.
Right, so about one acre.
Yeah.
One acre is about forty two thousand square feet.
I never knew that.
Okay, so this, this isn't a lot of land, it's only like, you have fifty acres there.
The property's fifty acres. For me, economically, it just, it wouldn't even make sense to do the business at a tier six. Um, at, in Michigan, for example, I got about twenty acres of canopy, and that is barely economical in that market. With current market prices for Massachusetts, it'd be very difficult to be a profitable business if I couldn't do a tier eleven on the property.
So that's where you plan to start, is at tier eleven?
Yeah, honestly, it's for my capabilities, it's smaller than what I'm used to. But if the main problem potentially is the smell, one acre versus two acres, the smell will be the same.
Um, apparently, other, most other municipalities in Massachusetts don't feel that. But I, I mean, I'm just, I'm just telling you what.
From a cultivated with experience growing cannabis, it really does change. You, you could have, you know, a sorcerer produce the same smell.
So can you talk more about your odor mitigation plan?
Absolutely. So vegetative buffer is, is part of it with plants that flower at the same time. But the main difference that I do, all my plants are harvested by now. In Michigan, we're just about done with our harvest. This is the time with the most smell, as, uh, has been noted recently. So that smell's gonna continue until, uh, the neighbor finishes his harvest. My methodology with the strains that I cultivate, I harvest them sooner. I'm done before the end of September.
Wow.
And so all the smells out of the field by then.
Are you har- i- is your cultivar in the same stage of bloom on your date of harvest as whatever your neighbor is doing now?
Uh, here in Massachusetts?
Yeah.
So the difference is the cultivar, yes. I grow something that leans closer to an autoflower, so it kicks into flower sooner, and so it finishes earlier.
So does it start smelling sooner?
Then I would presume that the odor would occur sooner.
When do you start smelling your odor, should you say?
It varies from year to year.
It varies?
Today was, or yesterday was not first day, it was offensive.
Okay, well, uh, the autoflower, it has quicker flowers, so it's not that it's more grown out and just shifted earlier necessarily. It just flowers quicker because of genetic component. So we're not, we're not gonna increase the odor earlier and cut it off later. We're just gonna be able to harvest sooner and.
But what I'm trying to ask then is, because it flowers sooner, does that just mean that any odor is sooner? It still has to flower before you harvest it, yes?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, that's what I'm interested in.
That's a team of plant that has more of a twelve week to fourteen week flower is gonna have twelve to fourteen weeks potential of smell. A autoflower plant, I'm able to flower it in six to seven weeks of flower period. So I could be less than half the time in actual flower to produce the final flower. So timeline wise, it's still gonna kick over about the same time, but it's gonna just finish sooner. So that, that's one part of the mitigation plan that I think is going to be most effective. Because I, I can speak about planting, maybe plants, and I'm gonna put odor emitters, it just isn't going to truly cover it as well as getting it out of the field sooner than the other stuff.
Do I misremember, or did you tell us at a prior meeting that your method of extraction eliminates the drying? And that's eventually where some of the odor is when it's dry.
That's drying the environment, it's just getting tons of odor at that time versus freezing it, putting it in a freezer, it's sealed, it's done.
So your, so your, your plant is gonna flower sooner and has.
It's gonna start flowering at the same time and then have a short.
Okay, okay, and then when you cut it, that's it?
That's it. I cut it, it goes straight into the freezer and has to be frozen while it's still wet. If it dries it, all the product will be ruined, so.
And in a different type of operation, it's cut. It's, the, the bloom is, has an odor, and then it's cut and hung, and then there's still.
It's gonna smell, and it's gonna continue to smell as you, uh, process it. You have to trim it, you have to look for mold, that will, every step of that process has smell associated with it.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay.
If, if we go back to just the tier numbers, I can't find it. I know I've got it here someplace, but it's easier to just ask. Your, you told us in probably your, your initial proposal what you felt your, um, canopy was going to be, and I can't remember.
It was the tier eleven hundred thousand square feet, so two acres of canopy essentially.
Right here.
I'm asking what his.
Oh, yeah, that would, that was in his application, actually.
That, right, that's what I, yeah, was gonna ask.
Two acres of canopy, where I'm gonna position it. Um, I've, I talked to Nathan next day to make sure that it was far enough away from his property line so he'd be comfortable. We discussed the fencing that we're going as well. So I think it'd be pretty easy to fit the two acres and the amount of space I have there.
Okay, um, let's talk about the termination date then.
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm prepared to relent, but your information is very different than what our lawyer had. I think your operation is probably very different than many in Massachusetts, so that could be a fun issue for her different, difference in experience. Um, we had, we amongst ourselves at one of our meetings had previously discussed when should it automatically terminate? And we were thinking when your license expires or need, it has to be renewed. And then she told me, well, that's every single year, that didn't make sense. And so I pressed her on that, and, um, she said, most towns do somewhere between two and five years for the automatic termination. And since it's a new business, um, because that's the point at which we would go back and if there had been problems that hadn't been remediated to our satisfaction, then we would renegotiate those. So, um, I was thinking that two or three years would probably, and I would probably say three. That's the number that came to my mind because it's enough fun for you to get your rights in the ground and have at least two years of insurance or actually third year of experience. And then we would, you know, we would know more. We'd be able to follow that more knowledgefully in terms of how it had affected us or what complaints or complaints we had received, that kind of thing. Um, what do you guys think about that?
Three or something.
Yeah, let's do three. Okay, are you okay with three? Okay, so we'll give you tier eleven.
Okay.
Based on a leap of faith here. Because you're very persuasive. And, um, so what we.
forthcoming is better word. I believe it is possible, is.
Um, in order to execute this, what she suggested we do, since we had those two questions unanswered and she doesn't have a clean document for us to sign, um, I'll get back to her about the conversation we had. She will make the document clean and we will sign it, and then she'll send you a locked document as a P D F that you can sign, and you don't have to come back here again, at least for that purpose. You will have to come back here again for your business purposes.
That works.
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And then, uh, the next step is going from the planning board.
Yeah, once, they're gonna wanna see the host community agreement.
Right.
I mean, you can, you can file your application with them.
Okay, can I pick that up at the town office? Is that correct, or?
Uh, I think it's online, isn't it?
It is online.
Um, I still need to post it, but I was planning on doing that when I got back up to the scene. I really just haven't posted that.
Okay, well, there you go.
Yeah, I can send you a link to it once I post it.
Thank you.
This is a special permit application.
Oh, the special permit application.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
That would be done by the planning board.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't know if, I think that may be online, I.
I think it is on.
Because I, if you can't find it online, drop me an email or I'll put you in touch with Fair at the Planning Board and we'll get it for you.
That works.
Okay. But you're gonna have to have the whole thing surveyed and do a site plan and all that stuff. But I think you've got most of that done already through your application.
Yes, I did.
So just which documents do you have to clock out for them, for them?
Okay, cool, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, thank you. I'll hang up this time.
Oh, I, I did have one question for you though, because I was looking at your application when I was talking to the lawyer, and something in there about having and growing stuff in there. And I, she asked me about that because this is entirely for an outdoor grow. And I wondered, I thought, or I guessed, that maybe that's where you started the plants before you planted them in the field.
Correct, yeah, it's a hoop house, it's not an indoor grow in any sort of manner, so it's just to start those seeds.
Well, I always like it when I guess and I'm right. I have ideas, I was guessing, but that was the only thing that made sense to me because I was sure that you would have told us clearly that it was only gonna be an outdoor. And so I thought it was probably where you started to seed things because it's more efficient to get them above the dirt before you plant them.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right, I think we've, I think that's our last negotiation.
Okay.
Well, this time around.
Yeah, three years.
Uh, Ellen Dupont, discussion about changes to the Board of Health in Massachusetts. She's not here, but I'll read it briefly. Um, November twenty twenty four, Governor Healy signed the Economic Development Bill into law, which included the state action for public health excellence legislation, commonly known as S A P H E, is that how you say that? S A P H E two point O.
That's the.
Pronounced safe.
Yeah, it's an acronym for some law.
Oh.
Or regulation.
Creates no requirements for all participants in the Massachusetts local public health system. These are just some of the key findings. Many Massachusetts cities and towns cannot meet current statutory and regulatory requirements and lack capacity to meet more rigorous national public health standards. Massachusetts has more local pu- public health jurisdictions than any other state. One for each city and town and sharing of services among municipalities is limited despite evidence that it improves effectiveness and efficiency. While other states have county or regional systems, most Massachusetts municipalities operate individual health departments making it difficult to manage growing responsibilities. The new law. So this is Board of Health requirements. Meet the performance standards, including workforce standards. Each Board of Health must meet performance standards individually or through cross-jurisdictional sharing with the option to join a state-supported public health excellence shared service. B, performance standards include, but are not limited to, standards for the following: inspections.
Epidemiology.
And communicable disease investigations or reporting and local permitting. C, workforce development standards include education, training, and credentialing. Two, support a report to D A, D P H each year by August thirty first showing compliance with the performance standards.
What was the date?
August thirty first. So I talked to Ellen about this at some point. She, or she called me and said, drew my attention, she said, have you seen the new regulations? And I, then I looked at them and then we talked, and she said that I think they have already begun. It puts a lot more work on the locals, uh, for health. And I think she told me, so don't hold me to it if I may be misremembering, that they were already investigating, you know, a shared services or the regional kind of support system.
Right.
To get some of this stuff done, but I think we probably ought to hold this.
Until she.
Until she can explain it to us because she understands it better than we do. Okay.
Samuel Guy, discussion about the possibility of starting a home trash pickup service in Plainfield. How we doing?
Doing all right, um, so I'd like to start a home trash pickup, um, bulk item pickup. Um, when I talked to Ruth, um, the only thing that seemed to conflict was the times that the transfer station is open. Um, I, right now, I am working the weekends, or that's mostly when it's open.
That's only when it's open, Saturday morning nine to one and Sunday afternoon four to six.
Yeah, um, I'm unfortunately not available at those times. I did see that it is moving to Wednesday, so I'm happily.
It is?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm happily able to use it on Wednesday, um, of course. Um, but that was the only conflict, I'm not exactly sure, um, how to go about it when Wednesday stop, if they stop.
Well, they used to do them on Wednesdays at least eight years ago. When I first got here, it was open on Saturday, Sunday, and Wednesday, I think it was. And then they dropped the Wednesday and just did Saturday and Sunday, as he, Rob, nodding his head. Yeah, so.
Dropping Sunday.
Yes.
It's good Saturday, Wednesday, actually, I like that better.
Me too. The o- the only other option is if you did collect trash, you could bring it to Valley, you know.
Yeah, that's also what I brought up, is bringing it to Valley Recycling, and that's me, stamped, correct?
No, Northampton, he's standing right there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So you would be doing both trash and recycling?
Yep.
I think it's a good idea.
I think you'd have some takers. Although, the transfer station is kind of a social event.
Yeah, to dump stuff and leave.
You see more people when I go to.
Yeah, parked in the way, you can't get to in there.
There's so many conversations with them.
Paulie.
Paulie Ryan, eleven weeks, they're at, I just wanna comment as the coordinator for the council on aging that I think it's a great idea, and I'd be happy to advertise it in our newsletter.
Sounds fair.
I think you'd have a lot of takers.
I do.
Go.
Depending upon your price.
Very reasonable.
Well, the bulk pickup too, I think. I see a lot of things out by the side of the road, people hoping that they're gonna disappear, but sometimes they do and sometimes they don't.
Sandy Moran, um, Oak Street, just wondering, will, if they were charged for a trash pickup to be dumped down trash?
Well, that's what he's saying.
On that inchworm, inchworm, um, compacture.
Well, it's figuring either buys a couple cards or whatever, however it works to make it so you, he's paying to get rid of the, you know. I mean, that's all.
Question, you know, is it, is it going to increase the volume? If, if, if you figure there's no pickup service now and he's just gonna be picking up trash for people who would otherwise put it there themselves, it should be a net wash for how much it costs to the compacture, right?
Or he has to buy a certain percentage of car, you know, they have to figure out the logistics of it, but obviously you'd have to pay for the trash to go in.
That's what I was asking, is, oh, would that work?
Because it, because he's gonna charge the people to pick it up, so I would hold.
Yes.
Same thing.
What it is, is just get people, to be really clean about it, if you get people, well, no, it would be hard to keep track, but never mind, that was a bad idea.
Well, that's a question I have done. Um, I have no idea how it would work, but, uh, or if we've ever had such a thing in town. But what if, let, let's just create a scenario here.
Okay.
What if you should be injured by something you pick up from some, from someone? Where is, how does, is there liability? I hate to think that way, but.
You do.
Having a business, you have to have insurance. He would have his own insurance because he'd be having his own business.
I'd have general liability, but, um, yeah, I don't think there would be any liability if I got hurt.
Um, it would depend upon if you were on the person's property or not. If you're on their property and you get hurt.
Yes, okay.
Then they would have a liability.
I believe that would be covered under general liability though.
Yeah. Sandy seems to know something about that.
Well, I don't know anything about it, because I'm not, I don't know everything, I just think they do. But I'm just thinking too also with, you know, town liability, but if he's his own business, then it's got nothing to do with a town, and it really doesn't have anything to do if he gets hurt on somebody else's property, if it's his business.
Well, but usually if you have, if you have people come work on your property, you wanna make sure they have a probable liability.
Because they have their business.
Right, yeah.
And I think it's, it's anything to do with the town.
Yeah, the town, the town would not be liable.
No.
Where does the license come from?
Well, we just give him a license to operate it and, and, but we're not, we're not liable if he gets hurt in the course of operating his business, they can't.
That's no, no.
I mean, if you got hurt, it adds auto.
I paid for it.
Yeah. Nope.
Oh, well, you know.
That's just true.
Right. I don't know, would he ask to go to other?
So, so what's the question here? Is the question, I think it sounds like a great idea too. I think you would have a lot of people interested, and, um, uh, I think you just have to go through whatever the process is of registering a business in town.
Yeah, that's, that's, I was doing my paperwork when I was informed to go to the select board. Um, but.
It's interesting, I mean.
Because you really don't have to come see us, you just fill out the stuff.
Yeah, it's nice that the select board knows when a new business is being started up in town, especially by someone who lives here.
And somebody that's young and wants to do something.
Yeah, thanks.
Not a problem.
Yeah, I just think you just fill out the stuff with Ruth, I believe.
Yeah, it's who he is, yeah.
Yes.
Well, if you're forever, if you need Ruth, then just come back to us. Um, not, we have any great sway over.
You just gotta have a business name and all that stuff.
Yeah, I already have all that, um, everything else seems like it's all set, it's just town.
Yes, how are you gonna advertise, or how are you gonna get clients? Word of mouth or?
I'm thinking, I have Facebook, word of mouth, um. I was gonna go into the Plainfield Post, and, uh, I'm thinking of also going down to Williamsburg, so putting in the Bergy Bee and things like that.
No, you could post it on the, um, on the post office bulletin board.
Okay.
You could post it at the transfer station, oh my God. Please take a lot of people for a trash pickup business, they have a bulletin board.
Questions?
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I see you.
I was thinking around, uh, like twenty dollars a week, so around sixty a month.
Pretty cheap.
Yeah.
Jerry has a question.
Jerry.
Yeah, okay, the question is, and you may have talked about it a little bit, I didn't quite catch it, but when we take our trash in, we have a punch card, so we're actually paying for the service. How will you work it when you're bringing other people's trash in? How do, how does the town get its money?
They either buy cards and have the punch, have it punched as he brought it in, or pays a fee or something, they have to figure out that part out.
We didn't come up with that solution.
You have to negotiate with the Board of Health, right?
Right.
Yeah, they would probably have to negotiate with the Board of Health.
All right.
He does.
Any other questions? Thanks for coming in.
The Board of the Prosswords, yeah.
Don't work too hard.
Hmm.
Claude's not here, but Claude Dupont, Select Board to vote on animal patrol officer designation.
Designating him?
I guess.
I thought we did that last time.
I won't, this is a, so I'm reading it.
He had a good time.
Sure, I thought you did that too, that Claude had asked me to put it on the agenda.
Well, this is.
That there was like a.
Tell him it's already happened.
Oh, yeah.
I think he had stepped out, right?
Yeah, he left us, he left.
Yeah, that's what happened.
It didn't happen last meeting, so we gotta do it right now, so.
No, we did do it, we read the whole list.
Yeah.
He wasn't in the room, doesn't matter.
We had other business that we wanted to take on.
He wanted to, he wanted to complain about the Geo General, he complained.
Which is not here to complain about, so.
All right, he's had two shots.
Any other business? Ed?
Yeah, you can hit me later.
Oh, yeah. I'm working on that, by the way.
Good.
This is from Ed, I'm writing to inform the committee of Select Board of the dangerous conditions that they, I don't even wanna say, k- chaos.
Chaos.
Kiosk at town offices, roofs collapsing and falling off. This is putting anyone using or near the chaos to the extreme danger of being. So, being hurt. I got two quotes to do this one and that one, and I presented them to Peter. Didn't tell me when his building committee meeting was, never got to the meeting. Now he wants to put them on the building. So I got Andy working on giving me a quote to put them on the building. So I'll push him to get it done, but it keeps getting, uh, backpedaled around, so.
Should be, uh, some way stable that, because if it hits that, yeah, we'll get, pause on. God, I mean, really, right there.
I typically had the roof fall on me when I punched something the other day.
And if you take it down immediately.
Yes, but then the question is, how do we comply with master law about?
It's emergency.
Okay.
Hopefully it's all.
Put that thing on it, she's thinking, the off meetings are supposed to be.
Hey, or on the police station board.
Yeah.
Print until otherwise.
It's emergency, just maybe. It's emergency to save it. Watch out, bro.
All we need is a good storm, it'll blow right over.
You don't even need that, I went up to post the other day, and I actually was afraid to close the.
It's been falling apart for years.
Go away, took my finger this way, you tried to get it over, it stood immediately off, because it's actually spelled at least two inches. When I get it, and it's forced now, because I don't think, after looking at it tonight, you can even open that door.
I don't think you can.
Well, let's come up with an aluminum.
One plus.
One to put on the building, instead of having it out on the driveways.
Just take it down now.
Yeah, yeah.
It should be gone immediately for the purpose to be saving.
Shannon, can you put a sign on the kiosk in front of the town?
I'll call Mark in the morning and.
I haven't.
Just gonna pull the poles and all that.
Actually, I have a big bruise on my hand from the.
Inside it.
I don't wanna go near it. I'll, I'll tape something to it, just.
Just, just keeping on the glass, that says, don't. Do, do not use, um, in the meantime, notices will be posted.
Oh, it'll be, it'll be gone tomorrow.
Oh, all right.
Thank you, okay.
Yeah, I do, I'm pulling it so bad.
I was gonna fix it myself, but I don't need to donate that much time, so we, we.
Maybe you bought the stuff to do it.
I have enough scraps of pressure drinking laying around, I should fix that post.
When I, when I realized how bad it was, I was thinking, there must be some business in the state of Massachusetts. That sells these things to towns, because.
They're made out of aluminum, these bolts to the post, they're no more made out of wood, they're ni- they're nice, and they got either twenty dollars or something.
How expensive are those?
They're three hundred and fifty bucks.
Well, shoot, I'll put it on my credit card.
I'm working on that right now, it's tax free, so we gotta plan either from Home Depot or.
Whatever.
Whatever.
Yeah.
It's in the works, gonna get to it today, I've got it, so tomorrow it's on the list.
All right.
Um.
It's not where I just where he's, I'm where he felt somebody gave my hurt.
Yeah, well, I want it fixed, you've been trying for about six months to get it fixed.
Yeah, Mark to go take it down more or less, and I appreciate it, thank you.
And I'd like to be notified if the building committee actually has meetings, cause I've asked to be notified, go to them and never do. So, Paul.
And Ben does have a town credit card.
Yes, I know. But we're, we gotta get it from a place that.
An unauthorized vendor.
They're going all take, take it with, um, tax exempt, is a big problem.
Other than any other business?
Thank you for that one.
Yeah.
I'm hopefully adjourned.
Well, I would second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.